Since Gary's fine, let's call the Board of Commissioners meeting to order here at 10:01. Those who are able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do we have any public here for comment for items that did not appear on today's agenda? See practically everybody in the room is here for an agenda item. So, do we have any additions to the agenda from either Commissioner Dershowitz or Commissioner Concepcion who's joining us by phone? Because you're attending a conference, I think, in Harrisburg, right?
Yes.
Yes, all right. So, no additions, moving on to the meeting minutes. Unless there's any changes, I think we could take a motion to approve the meeting minutes.
I'll make the motion to approve the board meeting minutes from October 22nd and 24th.
Second.
We have motion of second to approve the minutes from the meetings held on October 22nd and 24th. All those in favor do so by saying aye. Aye, pose nay.
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll move on to our proclamations. We have two today that are sort of on the same theme. Proclamation 58 is proclaiming November as Military Appreciation Month in Center County, and we have a whole bunch of people here for that. I think Julian's the main name, but I bet you Eugene and Brian and Mike would all like to say something too. So, why don't you come on up to the podium, or do you want us to try to have him on the side table, Gary? Gary'd prefer the side table if we could, so.
Yeah, join us then. Come on, you bashful guys.
We've got a variety of people here for Military Appreciation Month. So, I'm assuming, does Julian kick it off, then? You're the name I've got down as the main contact.
I got it.
You got it?
I can kick it off.
All right.
So, just again, I want to thank Center County on behalf of all the veterans at Penn State and in the local community, because we partnered now for several years with the county on this proclamation. This is our 13th year as a sustained event of Military Appreciation at Penn State and the Borough of State College, and we have a lot of great events planned this year. So, we're going to be kicking off on the 11th of November with our Veterans Day Ceremony in Old Main lawn, as always.
Yeah.
There's a series of events throughout the week. If you Google Military Appreciation at Penn State, it'll lead to our website, and the schedule of events is provided there for everyone to view. But, the community is welcome to this. And I'll just also happen to say that we are now in our third year in the Borough of State College of doing our Military Appreciation banners downtown. It was an idea we borrowed from Belfont.
Yep.
Because you have such a fabulous program here. But, again, it's something that's continuing in the borough and doing well. But, again, thank you for the continued support, and as a veteran, I'm humbled by the support of not only the county, but also the community.
Well, thank you, Eugene. Appreciate you coming. I'm trying not to promote you here, but I think you're a Colonel?
That's correct.
Okay.
Retired.
Retired, all right. Yeah, you still call yourself Colonel. Thank you so much for coming. Brian, was there anything you'd like to add?
Couple things. One, this year, we have a couple, well, one new thing, but we have some things we've done in the past as well. We do have our normal event at the, in front of the courthouse this year. Again, it's always kind of easy to remember, 11/11 at 11.
Yep.
You know, on the 11th day.
Yep.
11th hour. So, be there. In addition to that, this year, we are, it's kind of the every other year, we'll be putting up banners as well on that one. So, following the presentation for Veterans Day, there will also be a presentation for the banners that we're putting up, and then each of the individual families will put them up and go out and do an unveiling after that is over. So, that's usually kind of a nice event as well. And then I did, I know that, I think it's been put on your schedule, but we were also mainly due to the efforts of Sherry, who works in my office. We were able to get a flyover this year. We couldn't get it on the 11th.
All right.
It's just too hard, but we got it on the 12th. It's supposed to honor veterans, as well as the 80th anniversary for Foster Sayers, Senior, his actual death on that one. So, that's going to be on the 12th. It's going to be around 1:30, that's when the flyover is going to happen.
All right.
We're going to have a short ceremony afterwards, and then following that, there'll be like a reception, some food at the American Legion here in Malsburg on that. So, that's a nice event.
All right, and the actual flyover event, is that going to be at the state park?
It'd be, it's going to fly over, thank you for asking that.
Yeah.
It's actually going to be down by the monument there, at the, where we always hold our ceremony for Memorial Day, down at the breast of the dam, Head of Dam.
Right, at the, on the east side of the park, practically in Clinton County, almost, but not quite.
Yeah, it's almost a Howard Day.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, right there at the breast of the dam, there is a monument and everything set up to Foster Sayers, and that's where we'll be.
But, I'm assuming practically anybody on that side of the valley is going to be able to see it.
Yeah, there'll be A-10s, so maybe this gentleman can tell us about the A-10s.
Oh, yeah, that's a storied aircraft.
Yeah, it should be, should be impressive. It's always good to get fighters coming in for a flyover.
Yeah, yeah, so, may not be having those for too long. Keep trying to get rid of them, I guess, but we'll see.
They're the tank killers.
Yeah, I believe that's an airplane that was actually built around the machine gun.
Correct.
Yes, instead of the other way around.
Really not, it's actually a 3-inch gun.
Cannon.
Yeah.
Is it a 20 or 40 millimeter?
30 millimeter.
30 millimeter, yeah, okay.
Almost split the difference. Fabulous aircraft, still in service after all these years. The titanium probably helps.
Yeah.
All right, Julian, anything you'd like to add?
Thank you. No, I just wanted to add just a special thanks to the commissioners and the staff for helping to coordinate this, and really appreciate it, and the continued partnership that we all share, as Eugene mentioned. So, I just wanted to say thank you.
Great, well, I was going to talk about partnerships, so that's perfect. Yeah, the commissioners very much value our partnership with Penn State, with all of the local elected officials. Center County is roughly 22nd largest in population in the Commonwealth, but Brian and Roger and Sherry generally come in in the top 10 statewide for benefits received, applied for. I know there are years, Brian, where you find over a million dollars of additional annual income for our veterans and their widows or widowers. So, very much appreciate that. Anything you'd like to add, Commissioner Concepcion?
Really, just thank you for coming in and for sharing these events and these recognitions. I'm so glad we're able to be part of them as a county government, and looking forward to the flyover. That seems like a great event.
Wonderful. Commissioner Dershowitz?
Well, I think, I think Penn State's got a storied history of veteran service, and it's only appropriate that we honor that service, and we really appreciate you coming in today, and Julian and Mike, your, thank you for everything that you do. Brian, we're very proud of you and what you've done for the veterans of our area, but most importantly, going back to the collaborations, I think, you know, Penn State and Center County, we are pretty much hand in glove and working on so many different projects, but this is one we can be particularly proud of, so, thank you.
And do appreciate being invited to the Military Corps of Honor ceremonies. Please keep those invitations coming, and I do believe, Eugene, Penn State for a number of years has been ranked as high as best university in the nation for its support of our veterans.
Yeah, usually recognized.
Yes, tremendous. Any questions from the press on this? No? All right. Unless there's anything else, we could probably take a motion.
I proudly move that we adopt proclamation number 30, or 58, proclaiming November 2024 as Military Appreciation Month in Center County.
Second.
We have a motion of second to adopt proclamation 58, proclaiming November as Military Appreciation Month in Center County. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Pose nay? Didn't think we'd get any nays on that one. So, we have adopted the, oh, sorry, all those, we did that too. So, we are, I think, ready for the photo. You can come on up too, Mike, it's all right. Good, this side is all fine, because we got, actually, maybe at the edge of the county there, maybe near Ferguson Township, we got a lot of people. You can, you can handle Brian. Your veterans affairs. Thanks again. Appreciate it. We give that to Penn State, or can we keep that one? Okay, we'll have, we'll have. Oh, and for the press, we do have extras of the flyover brochure, so make sure you grab one on your way out. Continuing the theme of not just veterans, but also partnerships across the small business development and Penn State, we have proclamation number 59, proclaiming November 11th through 15th as National Veterans Small Business Week, and we have Annie Hughes here to talk to us about it. You still want her on the side?
Sure.
Okay, come on over to the side and tell us, give us some background, and I think Penn State just got a grant recently.
We sure did. We've been working on it many years, so, thanks for having me here today. My name is Annie Hughes, and I'm actually the interim director of the Veterans Business Outreach Program that I'll talk about in a minute, and I'm also the statewide coordinator for Invent Penn State, which is our entrepreneurship and innovation initiative statewide. We were fortunate enough as of September to get a grant from the Small Business Administration to be a provider of veterans entrepreneurship services in Pennsylvania. Prior to that, the office that was serving Pennsylvania also served a few other states. They were very busy, they have a lean staff.
Yeah.
We have a lot of veterans in Pennsylvania, over 600,000, some people say as high as 800,000. And veterans are generally very good at starting businesses and always looking for opportunities to better transition into civilian life. And, so, we're really excited. Invent Penn State will be providing these services to veterans, and we have been around since 2015. We've established good infrastructure around reaching the population. 75% of Pennsylvanians live within 30 miles of one of our centers, and we have 24 across Pennsylvania. And we've also started offering more online access as well for folks who can't, you know, get to us very easily. So, we'll be using that infrastructure to hopefully create more awareness and engagement with these veteran entrepreneurs. We'll be providing entrepreneurship training. There's a couple standard one or two-day courses that are provided as part of the V-Boc services, as well as one-on-one coaching, as well as business services. You know, there's great resources around business planning, around market research, things that are unaffordable by the average entrepreneur. And then, really, we're kind of, V-Boc is a front door to all the other resources around Pennsylvania for entrepreneurs. So, it's really about getting those veterans involved and engaged in the network of entrepreneurship services. We are having a ribbon cutting in, on November 13th.
Oh.
We're going to be sending out, yes, in State College. We'll be located in State College, but we'll be serving Pennsylvania, and we'll be having a ribbon cutting on Wednesday, November 13th at 2:30 PM, so you'll receive invitations shortly. And, and we're already open for business, however, so, please help us spread the word, and thank you so very much for your support. Thank you very much for adopting these proclamations. It's very important to the veterans and the veteran entrepreneurs in Pennsylvania.
Well, you're welcome, Annie. I've been involved with our local entrepreneurial community for a long time now, and I, the commissioners, I believe, did send a letter of support for your application, and I know I personally lobbied both of our senators and our congressperson for this particular grant, because it's really, really important. Obviously, veterans have a tremendous work ethic, they tend to also be very organized, and as you mentioned, they also tend to be very successful as entrepreneurs. And also, we've got a great crew here locally. If I'm remembering correctly, I think Elizabeth Hay, your director of the Happy Value Launchbox, was just awarded Small Business Person of the Year by the CBICC a couple days ago. That's where I got this handy-dandy, "We love Center County" mug, so showing that off with pride. But, thanks again for all you do, all your staff does, and Invent Penn State has a multi-billion-dollar impact Commonwealth-wide. We very much appreciate that.
Thank you so much.
Commissioner Concepcion, comments or questions?
Yeah, so, thanks for coming to our meeting to highlight this, and I'm looking forward to the ribbon cutting. I think, you know, veterans have gained like all kinds of really specific and technical skills in their service often, particularly in technology, and I think, you know, they often are going to have a lot of unique ideas to bring to small business development, and so, you know, this is both beneficial for veterans, but beneficial for our economy because of the role of entrepreneurship, and, you know, the role of often high-tech businesses that veterans might have particular skills to be able to get started. So, yeah, looking forward to the ribbon cutting, and I think this is tremendous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dershowitz?
Well, I think it goes without saying, again, our partnership with Penn State on so many different things, but your partnership with the community on this one is huge. I think it demonstrates how important Penn State is to Center County, and it's my honor to congratulate you and wish you only good success as you open your new adventure and go forward. I think it's going to be really interesting to see the stories that come out of it, so.
Absolutely.
We appreciate that very much.
Thank you very much.
Put an additional plug for your Origin Labs Makerspace and prototyping facility there in the Barron Building. The county commissioners played a small role in that. We helped CDECOG, our Regional Economic Development Group, come up with a grant to pay for half of the equipment.
Fantastic, thank you.
So, very much appreciate that partnership as well. Do we have any questions from the press on this one? No? All right, looks like we could take a motion, then.
All right, I would make a motion to adopt proclamation 59 of 2024, proclaiming November 11th through 15th as National Veterans Small Business Week in Center County.
Second.
We have a motion of second to adopt proclamation 59, proclaiming November 11th through 15th as National Veterans Small Business Week in Center County. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion carries. Come on up, Annie, and we'll present the proclamation.
All right, let's give Eugene a second. Here, he's trying to get a, did you get a good chat?
Yeah.
All right, all right. Great, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. What a pleasure.
You know, I have to, I have to make a comment, but one of my, one of my favorite places on campus is Michael Murphy's Memorial by Old Main. And the folks that maybe are not familiar with Michael, he was a Navy SEAL who lost his life in Afghanistan, and the movie Lone Survivor was, featured him, was a book written by Marcus Luttrell. And he was a real hero, and also a Medal of Honor recipient posthumously, and a Penn State graduate, so, I'm going to give him and James Beaver and a whole bunch of other folks a shout-out.
Yes.
But, we just have so many, so many meritorious veterans and alumni at Penn State that have so much to, we have so much to be proud of. But, I just wanted to highlight that, because that's one of my favorite places on campus.
A lot of great places on campus, yes. Well, we'll have Brian Query back up for resolution number 13, which is a resolution supporting Operation Green Light for veterans.
Well, I think it's most, I've been up here in a
Yeah, in a while.
A year.
Yeah, look at you. Well, we're glad to have you.
Yes.
Well, gratefully, you're going to be signing a resolution for Operation Green Light. I don't know if you're going to want to read it, I can just go over it real quick.
Why don't you go over it? That'd be good, yeah.
But, basically, it's where the opportunity, you start seeing, it's on us for several years, at least now, you might go out in either businesses or maybe even homes, you're going to see a green light on that one, and it's going to be adopted here for basically the sacrifices of veterans that they have provided. It's kind of a, obviously, it's a great time to be doing this as well, where you can show visually your support for veterans just by putting a green light. We're looking at, you can put them up from November 4th through the 11th, and you will see, we've talked with the local crew here, and you're going to see the courthouse is also going to be up in green. If you go by it in the evenings there, and you start seeing green.
Yeah.
That's what, it's to honor the veterans. We've talked a lot about, you know, businesses and the impact of the veterans and what they do in our communities day-to-day. There's just, I don't think we can describe the impact that those people have from those Congressional Medal of Honors that we talk about. I forgot to talk about Foster Sayers.
Yes.
He was also a Congressional Medal of Honor as well, you know, they do the ultimate sacrifice for our country. But, day-to-day, you know, we have veterans who are in active duty, well, soon to be veterans, but we have people out there, basically, I don't think people may really understand what that means to be serving in the military. It's a 24/7 job. It's not something that you can go home from, and when we have people, when they're overseas and they're actually deployed, they're probably not getting very much sleep, they're like really working 24/7. You know, Gene, everyone, it's done, and will understand what that is. It's not something you never go home from, you're on duty all day, every day on that. And some, they sacrifice their time, some sacrifice their lives, but many sacrifice their family time, everything. We just need to recognize what these people have done for us and what they continue to do for us even after they leave their service on that one. And it's always been my pleasure to work with the vets and help them get benefits and things. I know Eugene is the same way, and everybody that works with them. It's just, I'm honored to be able to do that for the veterans of our county and throughout the state.
Great, well, thank you, Brian. Very well said. The commissioners appreciate the service of our veterans. We don't quite go back to the beginning of the country, although here Potter Township does. So, we've had veterans here in Center County for 224 years, and before that, under other names of other counties. I was just reading about the string of forts in Penns Valley during the Revolutionary War. So, would very much like to extend our congratulations and appreciation to the veterans of the county. Happy to put forth the Operation Green Light for the citizens and for the newly painted, or about to be newly painted courthouse. I'll hand it over to Commissioner Concepcion for comments and questions.
Yeah, thanks for your work on this. It's a great effort to recognize their service, so, thank you.
Commissioner Dershowitz?
Well, I think there are a lot of Revolutionary War veterans in Center County, and that we recognize at most of our cemeteries, but we also, I mean, if you, if you think about Center County's history, we go, we go way back, and I would think that well into the future, we'll be making a mark in our country's service in our national defense, so, just thank you, and let's see if what we can do to sell out all the green light bulbs in our local stores. I think everybody should, should really be very proud of that, and I think, I think it'll be well-received, and it'd be, it'd be exciting, and plus, I think it'd be the first time that this courthouse has been lit up green. I don't know of another time that has, so that's, that's fantastic, so.
We have done it previously.
We have done it?
I thought we, yeah, I thought we've done last couple.
Yeah, we've done it.
Okay, all right. Well, we're looking forward to seeing it again, then.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Great, thanks, thanks, Steve. Any questions from the press on this one?
Is this part of a national program?
Yes. Yes, it's a national program.
Is this the first time it's been done here, or?
No, we've been doing it, I think it's really the first time we've got our act together and did a resolution and really got the word out really on that one. So, we've been doing it for a couple years here. Probably not as much, got as much publicity as we should have.
Yeah, great question, Gary. Yeah, it's an initiative of the National Association of Counties, and we started implementing it a few years ago, but as Brian says, now we're working with staff to really highlight our veterans at this particular meeting, so appreciate that. Unless there's anything else, I think we take a motion.
We'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 13 to 2024, supporting Operation Green Light in Center County.
Second.
We have a motion of second to adopt Resolution number 13, supporting Operation Green Light for veterans. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
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 Pose nay? Motion carries. Great, thanks again, Brian.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Now, we will move on to contracts and authorizations, and I'm sure those here for the veterans are, have a lot on their plate today, so.
Thank you.
Thanks. And we have Domer of our Emergency Management Agency here to talk about a grant.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'm here this morning to ask for your consideration for approval of the Emergency Management Performance Grant Agreement for fiscal year '24. The grant total amount is up to $69,262, which provides reimbursement for salary and benefits for EMA staff for the time period of October 1, '23 to September 30 of '24.
Great, thanks, Domer, and we do appreciate the grant. I believe this one's from the state level, isn't it?
This is reg, yeah.
Yeah, appreciate that from our representatives and senators. Commissioner Concepcion, any comments or questions?
No.
Commissioner Dershowitz?
Well, I think it's fantastic that we're able to support you this way, but I really want to give you a shout-out for, for your service beyond the call of duty last week and your, and your aid in comfort to an accident victim in Center Hall, and it's very well-received, and we really appreciate everything that the EMA Department does, but that is a, is a highlight of those things that maybe don't generally fall under your purview to be the first responder, but we really appreciate that, and it just, it just demonstrates your value to our communities, so, thank you.
Appreciate it very much.
Thank you very much, Domer. I think we could take a motion at this point, then.
All right, I would make a motion to add the Emergency Management Performance Grant Agreement to the November 12th consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion of second to add the Emergency Management Performance Grant Agreement to the November 12th consent agenda. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Pose nay?
Aye.
All right, we'll take those as an aye.
We're in.
We're in, we're good. So, thank you very much, Domer, appreciate that.
Yep.
Moving on to
Thank you, recognition.
Yeah, moving on to capital projects, Jonathan has a change order for us.
Good morning. I'm asking for your consideration and approval of a combination of change orders for GM McCrosen, Hallstrom Clark Electric, and Ainsworth Incorporated for the Human Services Facility. These change orders total $8,018.52.
And I believe that's a net amount. We also had some credits in there, which
That's correct. The credits were around $12,000. The net amount is $8,000.
Okay, great. Any questions, Commissioner Concepcion?
Oh, no, not at this time.
All right, Commissioner Dershowitz?
All right, we're good.
All right, we'll take a motion, then.
All right, move to approve the change orders for the Human Service Facility.
Second.
We have a motion of second to approve the change orders for the Human Services Facility. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
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 Oppose nay? Motion carries. Great, thanks, Jonathan.
You know, we're going to have to get a name for it at some point here, Human Service Facility.
I know.
Center Crash, we got to
Let's, let's get the election handled first.
I know. Just a point that I was
Okay, there they are. I'm like, is, is John going to handle this one? So, for Planning and Community Development, we have the Center County Metropolitan Planning Organization here for a potential project up in Snowshoe, and we have Marcella and Cochi going to cover that.
All right, well, thank you for having us. Thank you for accommodating my timeline. It's been pretty tight, but the NPO is seeking to apply for federal discretionary funding under the Bridge Investment Program to meet the November 1st, 2024 deadline. Pendott District 2 has programmed funding on the 2025 to 2028 Center County Transportation Improvement Program, otherwise called the TIP, for a bridge improvement project on State Route 4005 over Interstate 80 at exit 147 in Snowshoe Township. The Snowshoe Bridge is owned and maintained by Pendott District 2, who is committed to maintaining the bridge throughout its life cycle. This bridge improvement project will address the poor condition of the structure, increase the under clearance on I-80 to reduce the potential for bridge strikes, and reconfigure the off-ramps at exit 147 to make them easier to navigate while reducing the occurrence of crashes at both intersections. So the CCMPO is requesting that Center County Government consider sponsoring the funding application for the upcoming bridge improvement project because the MPO is not eligible to apply for this funding program. The MPO recognizes that the county financial and staff resources are limited. So Center County would not be expected to provide any local match to any discretionary funding that is awarded, nor would we ask for you to complete any paperwork aside from the standard forms that we have discussed or administer the grant as the project sponsor. So if this grant is awarded, the funds would pass through to the Center County TIP and PennDOT District 2 staff would manage the construction project, the grant, everything in its entirety. As far as county responsibilities would go, if this funding is awarded, the county would be responsible for submitting quarterly progress reports to the Federal Highway System Administration and would work with PennDOT District 2 to ensure that the submissions are timely and accurate. The county planning department has submitted similar, similar quarterly reports for the county bridge bundle projects. But the MPO staff is also committed to assisting county staff with these reports and any other administrative duties that come up during this. So as of today, the, the grant application is about 90, 95% complete, mostly with cleanup, editing, making sure everything is kind of cohesive and put together, that we have all the required documentation. It is due this Friday, November 1st, and I plan to submit it Friday. I need all the time that I can get. So I'm, I've been working with Coche and then John's staff to, to make sure that all the, the forms are signed appropriately and, and to be able to be submitted through the portal for the grant. So we talked a little bit about the benefit cost analysis. So this, the reason I'm so late in presenting this is because we were waiting to hear back from our consultant about the benefit cost analysis. So the benefit cost analysis shows a ratio of 2.89 at a 7% discount rate and a ratio of 4.03 at a 3% discount rate. So benefit cost analysis values of 1 or greater are considered to have benefits that outweigh the cost of the project. So this means that we have a pretty competitive application. So we would like to move forward and have, ask the county to consider sponsoring this.
Great, thanks, Marcella. And Coche, thanks for your very, very fast response on this. Was there anything you'd like to add?
I don't, I don't believe so at this time. I think Marcel has done a great job with the application in, with support of PennDOT and the consultant as well, moving forward on this. We did provide some, the county did provide some economic development information as well as transportation information related to how that community utilizes the bridge. So it, that will be added into the application as well.
Great, well, I appreciate the two of you reacting so quickly on this so we can pull down these federal dollars. In addition to making the interstate perhaps a bit safer, I think a big thing for the commissioners is it'll make the exit more accessible for Snowshoe residents, for larger trucks that are utilizing that exit. Obviously, that's a critical intersection for Snowshoe. It's, I'm assuming the way most people get into Snowshoe. There are other ways, but they're kind of backroads.
Yes. I'll just add that we are requesting, for, for BIP funds, we are requesting 9.1 million for the construction phase of the project. Initially, we weren't sure how much we would request, but through the discussions between the county, between PennDOT and between our consultants, we decided to go for the full construction cost. So if we were able to get that 9.1 million, that would offset costs on our Center County TIP, which would then free up money for other projects.
I know we have a lot of other projects we're considering as well. Commissioner Concepcion, you also serve on the MPO board. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, and also on the Projects Committee, which is where, you know, we started the discussion of this project, and it's important. And I would, you know, in addition to the safety reasons and improvement for accessibility of that exit, I think the other, you know, critical thing is that there's a lot of important projects on our transportation plan. And if we can get, you know, this federal funding for this project, that will help us tackle some of the other important projects that are also important and necessary, so. Yeah, and I'd really like to thank the staff for the, of the MPO and Coche for your work on, on getting this done really efficiently.
Great, thanks, Commissioner Concepcion. Mr. Dershowitz.
Correct me if I'm wrong, is, this has to be one of the largest, if not the largest, sponsorships that Center County has done of a bridge project. I, I think 9.1 million probably is the threshold that, that we have to beat now.
Since, since I've been here with the county, I would, would agree with that, yes.
Yeah, this is an important.
Our bridge bundles are not, not this sizable. This is a full replacement of a span that's about 292 feet long, and it's going from 32 feet to 40 feet in width. So it's going to be a significant project. It'll be elevated a little bit higher to allow under clearance on the bridges and then realign the on-ramps as well as the exit ramps. So it's more of a straight-on intersection as opposed to the, the 90-degree turns that are currently existing there. So it's a, it's, it will be a nice rearmament.
Sort of a big deal.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and I think Snowshoe, anyone that visits Snowshoe on the rails to trails who has to jockey around those turns with their, their trailers and, and their buggies on will appreciate that as well as the tractor trailers that are utilizing that exit as well.
I just want to thank our legislators, both state and federal, who, who support these initiatives and make them possible, so appreciate it.
Great, any questions from the press on this one? We don't normally do $9 million bridge projects, so this is tremendous. Looks like, looks like we take the motion.
All right, I will make a motion to approve Center County Government to act as the pass-through for the Bridge Investment Program. So, and hopefully we're successful.
Yes.
$9.1 million worth.
Second.
We have a motion of second to approve the Center County Government to act as the pass-through for the Bridge Investment Program. All those in favor, do so by saying aye.
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 Oppose nay, a motion carries. Great, thanks, Coche and Marcela.
Thank you very much.
We'll get those signed here in the next day or so.
Indeed.
Need to get on those quickly. So now we'll move to Human Services. Faith has multiple interesting contracts for us, including projects in Phillipsburg and Snowshoe.
Okay, good morning.
Morning.
All four agenda items today are requested a same-day approval just because of the timeliness of the submission dates with the state. The first two are for our FAIR grants. So this will be the first year that we're actually applying for two different projects. Usually we apply for one at a time. The first is a request for $15,000 from FAIR for the continuation of our Housing Navigation Program. You will see that there is a grant total request of 20,000 with a county match of 5,000. So that $5,000 is already a part of our budget. It already supports staff, and so it's not an additional funding ask. However, it does make our application more competitive. The second is for, again, obviously FAIR, but it's for the FAIR Rental Assistance Program. So the last time that we applied for the Rental Assistance Program that we ran for a couple of years was in the fiscal year '20 grant competition. Of course, with all the different rental assistance programs that were coming into our department as a result of the pandemic, we took a pause and we realigned and did the housing navigation. The reason that we're gonna kind of resurrect the program, or hopefully if we're approved, is because the amount of rent that people are paying now is so exorbitant and different than it was a couple of years ago that programs like the RAP program, where they can get up to 1,000 or 1,500, just really isn't cutting it when rent can be as high as 2,000. And so we're looking to use $70,000 from that program with a county match of 10,000, which again is already part of the budget, to act as a supplement essentially. So when we have a family coming in in need of, you know, one or two months of rental assistance, we might be able to package and combine funds to be more effective. So those are the first two for FAIR.
Looks like you want a motion on this, right?
Sure, go, yes, yes.
All right. I would, I would make the motion to approve the Adult Services Items 1 and 2.
Second.
We have a motion of second to approve the first two items for Adult Services. All those in favor, do so by saying aye.
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 Oppose nay, motion carries. And now Faith will cover two items that are recommendations from the Center County Housing Task Force.
Yep. So the first one is the Rental Housing Project Request for the Phillipsburg Revitalization Corporation. And we have some guests from the PRC today to speak a little bit more about their project. We are requesting $227,960 for the rehabilitation of two units. So they're two separate properties, so they have to be two separate applications. So you will see that when you're signing the documents. And then we also made it very clear that it's just the two properties on the second floor that will be under the Laura or the covenant of the 20-year affordability. So once that is approved, we should be all set to submit that to the state for review. And then the state ultimately has to decide if we can move forward with the project. The second and final agenda item is for the same affordable housing project through the ERAP 2 program. That's for the Nassis Trailer Park out in Snowshoe. We've been working with Jennifer on trying to determine the costs and what the impact could be of one single wide mobile home. So we're looking at $99,500 for the purchase and the setup of one mobile home that would again be affordable for 20 years out in Snowshoe. So at this time, that has met all of the funding that's available. That's six applicants, applicants and seven total projects, about over $1.5 million into the Community for Affordable Housing. And what's really nice is we have kind of a spectrum across the county, too, of where we'll be able to support people. So unless you have any direct questions for me, I'll hand it over to Eric. He wants to talk a little bit more about his project.
All right, yeah, that sounds good if you, I don't know which Eric's coming up.
There are two Eric's, so it's kind of up to them.
Which Eric do you want to hear from?
Well, I'm assuming the proper Eric, which is probably Eric Roundtree at this point. But then both Eric's later, I think.
I just, for the record, Eric Ruschnack, President of the Phillipsburg Revitalization Corporation. I just want to thank the, the commissioners for all of your support. We are really rebuilding significant parts of our town right now. And our partnership with, with the commissioners and, and now with the Affordable Housing Task Force is, is helping that come along. As you know, CBICC just launched its Economic Strategic Plan a couple of weeks ago, and we're very proud that we're a big part of that. And we're also proud that we will be part of the affordable housing issue to be the solution, one of the solutions for affordable housing in, in the county as we bring more buildings back online. I think you're familiar with the, the project that we're working on. You've been there several times, but be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Eric, I did want to mention that you're kind of following what's called the Strong Towns Model there in Phillipsburg, where one of the first things you do is to put in affordable or reasonably priced housing on higher stories of multi-use buildings, which then attracts businesses to those first-floor levels. And then the more businesses you have, the more people want to move into your town, which then over time strengthens the town. So we're, we're very supportive of this. And as Faith mentioned, we're doing projects now in both Phillipsburg and Snowshoe in addition to the other projects we've done in State College. And we very, very much appreciate the work that you and the other Eric have been doing.
I'm the other Eric, actually.
You're the other Eric?
He's the original.
The Eric. For all the work that you and all, everyone else at the PRC has been doing up in Phillipsburg, it's been very impactful. Commissioner Concepcion, comments or questions?
Yeah, I think this is a pretty exciting project. And I agree with the analogy of the Strong Towns Model. This kind of mixed-use residential near retail spaces is really an opportunity to, to grow the number of people who are coming in and out of downtown Phillipsburg and revitalize the town by, you know, mixing, you know, many different kinds of uses of space. And just really kind of excited to see this project finally come to completion in the near future because it's really going to be kind of an anchor for downtown Phillipsburg, I think. And to have some housing, affordable housing and be part of that, I think is, you know, really critical to, to the regrowth of that area. So congrats on, on this project, and I'm glad we're able to support it.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Concepcion. Commissioner Dershowitz.
Your efforts are not going unrecognized. I don't know how many times I've talked to people, and Phillipsburg's on the map as, as really, you know, an up-and-coming, you know, I like to say up-and-coming, but it's already, it's, it has such an amazing, rich history. It's, it's difficult to say that. But I think there's a revitalization and a regrowth of, of enthusiasm for, for, for the community. And I know there are folks that have a vested interest in Center County Government to make sure that, that's successful. So we're, we're all very proud of what you're doing up there and glad that we can help you out in that, in that effort. And I'm sure those efforts will continue, so good luck.
Thank you very much, appreciate that.
Thank you. Questions from the press?
When you talk about rebuilding, what are some of your other priorities?
One of the things that we're working on right now is to have a strategic plan for our town. So we got a grant from DCED to create an economic strategic plan, a five-year plan. And we got some support from the Phillipsburg Borough to do that as well. And so we're working with a consultant at the Pennsylvania Downtown Center to put that together. Putting some strategy behind our growth, I think, is really important, knowing, you know, where we should be focusing our efforts and in what order is important. Also, just recognizing untapped opportunities. We're, we're a town of hard workers and gritty people, and, and so that sets us off and I think makes us unique from other towns in Center County. And capitalizing on that is really important for us.
Great question. Gary, any other questions from the press on either the affordable housing project in Phillipsburg or the mobile home project in Snowshoe? Well, looks like we could take a motion.
All right, I would make a motion that we approve the affordable housing initiatives as, as listed in Items 3 and 4.
Second.
All right, we have a motion of second to approve the affordable rental housing projects, Items 3 and 4. All those in favor, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose nay. Motion carries, great. Thanks, Eric, thanks, Faith.
Thank you.
Now we'll, don't go anywhere, all right? Now we'll move on to Julia with five items for the Mental Health Intellectual Disability Early Intervention Drug and Alcohol Superdepartment.
Okay, good morning. I have three renewals, one new contract, and an addendum. So I'll start with the first renewal. And it is with the Center for Community Resources to provide mental health services. The county share of that is $2,305. Next contract is a new contract for our Intellectual Disabilities Department, and there's a contract with Elevated Support Services to provide behavioral support. The contract total is $5,000, with the county share being $231. The next is approval and of addendum with Center County Youth Service Bureau. This will allow additional funding in the amount of $28,643 to their contract. The next is a contract renewal with Susquehanna Software Incorporated. That contract total is $49,000, with the county share being $2,259. And finally, a renewal with White Deer Run LLC to provide drug and alcohol services. The contract total is $70,000 with the state, or sorry, total state contribution, no county match.
Great, thanks for covering that, Julia. We do appreciate the state funding to provide these broad variety of services to citizens all over the county.
I think we hit every department.
Commissioner Concepcion, comments or questions?
No, thank you.
All right, we're all good.
All right, I think we can, may have a motion added to the consent agenda.
All righty, I'd make a motion to add the Mental Health Intellectual Disabilities Early Intervention, Early Intervention in Drug and Alcohol Items 1 through 5 to the November 12th consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion of second to add the five items for MHIDEI Drug and Alcohol to the November 12th consent agenda. All those in favor, do so by saying aye.
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 Oppose nay. Motion carries, great, thanks, Julia. Moving on to the consent agenda. Tiny bit bigger than average, but nothing too crazy in there. Okay, well, I guess we'll make a motion to approve this week's consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion of second to approve this week's consent agenda. All those in favor, do so by saying aye.
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 Oppose nay, motion carries. All right, now we're moving over to two letters of support, both for the Phillipsburg area. And it looks like Eric Kelmanson's covering this one. Where'd your other Eric go?
This is, he ran off. He ran off.
All right. Oh, try to, so anyway, why don't you come on up and introduce the topic and hopefully our second Phillipsburg Eric will be done talking to Faith.
Good morning. Eric Kelmanson here. As, as some of you may recall, I spoke about a project in Phillipsburg a month, I think in September. I sort of presented that project to the Housing Task Force. I was requesting county funds for, for a portion of that project. I subsequently withdrew that application for, for a few different reasons. But Faith and, and had turned me on to two state grant opportunities, which, which I thought were a better fit. Both administered through the PHFA. So I'm here today, same project as before. Just, just to remind you, it's, it's the restoration and redevelopment of a historic property. remind you, it's, it's the restoration and redevelopment of a historic property in downtown Phillipsburg. Phase 1 has already started, and these, this sort of grant application that we're writing is for Phase 2. It'll be for, for affordable housing units. So a portion of Phase 2. It's a really cool old building. It was a Packard dealership. It's, it's all concrete and rebar with a brick veneer. I'd love to give you guys a tour sometime.
Oh, great.
It's sort of, it's, there's three floors of garage space. There was an old car elevator. The elevator's been removed, but the gigantic shaft is still there. But there's three floors of garage space, and this will be to renovate the second floor of garage space and turn it into these sort of industrial loft apartments. And the, the sort of, the state funding or the state grant opportunity would, would go a long way towards creating beautiful and affordable housing units in Phillipsburg. So it's sort of a triple whammy. You know, it creates affordable housing units, restores a blighted building, while also contributing to, you know, sort of the revitalization of downtown Phillipsburg more generally. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to-
So much extra to do in Phillipsburg now. I suppose we could come early and maybe eat at one of the fine restaurants like Brown Dog and do a little shopping, maybe to places like Shindig Alley. I know, Steve, you like vintage items, and they've got a lot of fun stuff.
I bought a bunch of fun stuff.
You bought a bunch of stuff from Shindig already. All right. And then, of course, there's the Dead Canary Brewery there.
For sure.
And one of the finer libraries in the county, practically next door. I believe you have a total of like, is it 14 units in the building?
There's gonna be a total of 14. And then with commercial space as well, that'll also be renovated. So one of the grants is for, we're asking for $50,000. It's an RFP through PHFA. It's for the design of the commercial space as well as the four units. And then the Fair funding is for the actual construction work. That's a larger sum.
Three-quarters of a million.
Yes, that's correct.
What's the age of the building?
It was built, I think it was 1910, maybe 1912.
Because I was just trying to put a timeline with the Packard dealership, you know, if they put a car elevator in it, whether that was a retrofit or original equipment.
So I think the building, so the, the front half was built earlier, I believe, and the second half was an addition. So that, that may, that may be like 1920. But I think it was when they would, you know, the, the rubber tires were nowhere near as durable as they are today. So they'd have to winter their cars. And there was, you know, space to work on the vehicles as well. But they would winter vehicles, there is my understanding.
Yeah. Fabulous. So we have another Strong Towns related type project, 14 residential units, four of which will be affordable, plus additional commercial space. Questions from the press on this project?
It is 233 North Front Street. Oh, North Front Street. Yes, sir. Yep.
Continued revitalization of downtown Phillipsburg, combination, obviously, of public-private partnership to help make that happen. Tim, did you have a question? Nope. All right. Unless there's anything else, looks like the other Eric is still out in the hall working on details.
Yeah.
All right. Looks like we could take a motion on that.
All right. I would make a motion to approve the letters of support for these, for the project.
You still there, Amber?
Still there, Amber? Oh, yeah. Sorry, the sound faded out. I will second the motion.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve the letters of support for the 233 Front Street LLC projects in downtown Phillipsburg.
Thank you. And just to conclude, thank you for your support on this particular project, but also more generally. Center County has been very pivotal and critical with Phillipsburg's redevelopment. So thank you for all of your support.
Great. Thank you, Eric. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
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 Pose nay. Motion carries. All right. John, we have a CNET request, I believe.
Yes. So while the election is on November 5th, work on the election continues beyond that date, as the Board of Elections will be holding meetings on November 7th and November 8th to continue pre-cancelling activities and trying to, you know, close out the election. So as part of that, given that there is heightened interest in the election, to make it more accessible for folks to follow along in the progress of, of pre-cancelling, we are seeking the sponsorship for those two meetings so that they can be covered by CNET.
Great. Thanks, John. We appreciate CNET even considering a show this long on the short of a notice.
Thanks, Steph.
Yeah. Thank you. Any questions, Commissioner Concepcion?
No, I think this is a good idea.
Commissioner Dershowne?
Well, I kind of liked it, it's starting at 2:00 PM, and there's really no end time.
Nice.
So we'll see how this goes.
Really long program.
Yeah. So we might have, we might, we, this might be an Emmy-worthy, just by its, by its very length of tape.
An epic.
Yeah, be an epic. Yeah, that's exactly right. It could be a mini-series.
There we go.
Anyways, I would make the motion to approve the CNET taping.
We have motion of second to approve the CNET taping sponsorship for the Board of Elections meetings on the 7th and 8th of November. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
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 Pose nay. Motion carries. We'll move on to the check run dated October 25th. I, since Amber is on the phone, I took the liberty of choosing the check of the week as the Center Public Libraries grant for $41,666.66. And this goes to the public libraries in State College, Belfort, Center Hall, and Phillipsburg. Very much appreciate our partnership with our local libraries. I will ask for a motion to approve the check run dated October 25th.
I will make that motion.
Second?
Motion of second to approve the check run dated October 25th. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
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 Pose nay. Motion carries. John, any administrators report?
Nothing to report at this time.
All right. And moving on to reports and announcements, as Vice Chair of the Board of Elections, Commissioner Dershowne will sub in on the voter registration report.
All righty. Okay, Amber, I hope I'm doing you proud. Okay, we have-
Thank you.
A total of 109,820 registered voters in Center County. That's made up of 45,244 Democratic registrations, 176 Green Party, 630 Libertarian, 16,538 No affiliation, 44,276 Republican, and it looks like there are 2,956 of all the others. And that's up 1,653 from the last report.
Ooh, more than I would have thought.
Okay. Now I'm gonna take a little artistic license here. I'm probably taking you out of, I think you were probably at the Green Party or the Green Party area, I think, in our last, but we're going for the Halloween party today.
Okay, all right.
That's it this week. Our small party affiliation this week of the, of Halloween party is one registered voter. But we're recognizing that one Halloween party voter today because, you know, it's Halloween.
Yeah.
So, all right. Then the precinct of the week, and let me get my glasses back on here, is Precinct Number 76, which is Snowshoe Township East. They vote at the spring, or the, yeah, spring, the Snowshoe Township Building. And in the last election, there were a total registered voter count of 682. There were 197 ballots cast, which led to a percentage voter turnout of 28.89%. And we just want to say thank you to Snowshoe Township for allowing us to use their facility, and we'll look forward to seeing you again next week, because this is the final voter registration report before the, the general election next Tuesday. So if you're thinking about voting, get, get your, your mail-in ballot squared away here quickly, and if not, we'll see you next Tuesday. That's it.
Wonderful. And remaining announcements, today is the last day to apply for a mail-in or civilian absentee ballot. I believe the deadline is 5:00 PM. The Board of Commissioners meeting next week, Tuesday, have been canceled due to the general election, and Center County Government offices will be closed on Monday, November 11th in observance of Veterans Day. John, any executive sessions to report or hold?
No executive sessions to hold, one to report. The Board of Commissioners met on October 24th from 11:41 AM to 12:26 PM to discuss a real estate matter.
Great. Thank you, John. Remaining of our public meeting schedule, we have a budget work session starting at 1:00. And then on Thursday, we have the Finance Committee at 9:00, Combined Salary Board and Board of Commissioners at 10:00. And then we will be convening the Board of Elections meeting at 6:00 AM on Tuesday, November 5th, and keeping that puppy open for-
How many dozens of hours, Steve? I don't know, a few days.
This would be like your 40th election.
Yeah. We'll, we'll make it through.
We'll make it through. Any additional questions from the press?
Do we have any ballpark number? How many mail-ins were requested in Center County?
I saw it was 21,000 and a lot of change recently. Could be 22,000 by now.
Close to 22,000.
Closer, closer to 22,000. And I think a very large percentage of them have already been returned as well, like 15,000 or 16,000. So that's going pretty well at this point. Great question, Gary. Any, any additional questions from the press? We'll have Eric Ruschnick back in case anybody has any questions for Eric. No? All right. Unless there's anything else for the good of the order, I think we'd take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll, I'll second the motion.
All right.
Amber may have had to-
Oh, sorry. I can't hear. Sorry.
All right.
Sorry about that.
All those in favor adjourning do so by saying aye.
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 Pose nay. We are adjourned at 11:03. Thank you very much, everyone, for coming.